Hey, good evening and welcome to the October 9, 2018 regular meeting of the Brevard County Commissioners. Commissioner Smith, are you with us, sir?
I am, indeed.
All right, we have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. And if you would, please bow your heads with us for a moment of silence. Commissioner Tabaya.
Please stand and join me in my pledge. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have four sets of meetings of, I'm sorry, minutes to approve: September 6, September 11, the 18th, and the 25th. We have a motion to pass the minutes.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Barfield, second by Commissioner Isnardi. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Passes 5-0, and we're moving into resolutions, awards, and presentations. Is Mr. Young here? Bill Young? I didn't think I saw him yet, so we're going to move to the second one. Mr. Harris? Would you come forward? Rodney Harris's family.
Which one?
Oops, sorry. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay. We'll come in right after. How are you?
Doing good.
My goodness, you've aged very well.
Thank you.
This is an honor to, I get to read this for you tonight, sir. This was the umpire for my softball games when I was six years old. I enjoyed that immensely. My dad would go out and just argue with him over the plays. So it's just an honor to have you here tonight. You are always a very big part of my heart, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm going to read this, and then if you'd like to say something, we'd be so honored. "Mr. Rodrick Harris began his distinguished career with the City of Titusville Parks and Rec Department in 1963. And whereas in December 1, 1966, Brevard County Board of County Commissioners was blessed to add Mr. Rodrick to their Parks and Recreation Team. And whereas, over the span of his tenure in the Brevard County Parks and Recreation Department, Mr. Harris mentored and encouraged the youth of North Brevard at numerous parks by volunteering at after-school programs, summer rec programs, softball and basketball leagues, game rooms, hosted dances for teenagers. Through his efforts, several youth were afforded the opportunity to go to college and some even awarded scholarships. And whereas, Mr. Harris retired from the Brevard County March 3, 1999, with 33 years of service. And whereas, he returned to the Brevard County Parks and Rec Department in November of 2001, joining the maintenance team. And whereas, he received a nomination for Outstanding Partner of the Business of Education awarded from the Titusville Area Chamber of Commerce, commending him for his support of the educational system. And whereas, Mr. Harris's passion for service doesn't end there. For 34 years, he has held the position of pastor from time to time at the Greater Mount Zion Missionary Church in Merritt Island. And his role affords him the opportunity to mentor, guide, and counsel youth and provide for those in need with clothing, food, transportation, financial assistance, educational field trips, and full and house library with study programs. Mr. Harris is a proud citizen of Brevard County who has selfishly served the North Brevard community through his career. Mr. Harris is retiring from Brevard County in September of, oh, he had retired from Brevard County. No, he is retiring.
He has retired.
You're retiring?
I retired.
September?
September 21st.
My goodness, so you did retire?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. 2018. I know, I'm starting to figure that out here right now. "With 50 years of professional experience and extensive service to youth and those in need, now therefore be it resolved that the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners does hereby declare October 13 as Rodrick Harris Day. Done, ordered, and adopted this ninth day of October 2018. I make a motion to approve this resolution."
Second.
Second by Commissioner Barfield. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes 5-0. Sir, would you like to?
I would just like to say I appreciate all of you for what you have done. I thank the county. I raise the family, working for the county. God has really blessed me. And if you want to know how I made it this far, it's by the grace of God. And I thank you all so much.
Thank you.
God bless.
Mary Green and former Councilman Ken Green. Ken Green was a former councilman at the City of Palm Bay, in case anybody didn't recognize him, which I almost walked past you and didn't recognize you, so.
You did walk past me.
I know. Well, your wife was here, so that was helpful.
Recognized her, but didn't recognize me.
In my defense, she was first. You were kind of behind her, so.
Story of my life.
That's true. Thank you, guys. Can I read this resolution? "Whereas, an invisible disability is defined as a physical, mental, or neurological condition that limits a person's movements, senses, or activities that is invisible to the onlooker. And whereas, symptoms of invisible disabilities can include debilitating pain, fatigue, dizziness, cognitive dysfunctions, brain injuries, learning differences, and mental health disorders, as well as hearing and vision impairments. And whereas, these symptoms are not always obvious to the onlooker, but can limit a person's ability to do daily activities and lead to misunderstandings, false perceptions, and judgments. And whereas, the Invisible Disabilities Association was founded in 1996 by Wayne Connell as a way to educate friends and family about his wife's invisible disabilities and help raise awareness that invisible illness, pain, and disabilities are very real. And whereas, Invisible Disabilities Week is an opportunity to encourage, educate, and connect people and organizations touched by illness, pain, and disability around the globe. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby recognize October 14 through the 20, 2018, as Invisible Disabilities Week, to bring awareness, education, and support to those suffering from invisible disabilities in Brevard County and throughout the world. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this ninth day of October, AD 2018." I'll make a motion to approve for this resolution?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Isnardi, second by Commissioner Barfield. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes 5-0. Thank you.
I'd like to thank Commissioners Isnardi and the rest of you. This is very important to me, as I am a person with more than one invisible disability. Probably almost everyone in this room either has an invisible disability of their own, or at least knows someone who does. Diabetes, high blood pressure, kidney disease, hearing impairment, those are some that just about everybody we know has one of those. And those are all considered invisible disabilities. The reason I find it so important to educate people about this is even as a member of the disability community myself, I sometimes get harassed and bullied by other members of the disability community because I don't need a wheelchair, because I don't need crutches or a cane. So it's important that people realize, especially if you see somebody parking in a disabled parking spot, which is when I usually get the most harassment, just because you physically don't see something wrong with that person does not mean that they're not disabled. And just because you're told you're disabled does not mean that you are completely disabled from doing anything. The majority of people who have been diagnosed with some type of disability are still able to function. We're still able to work. So we're trying to bring awareness to people that not every disability is visible. And if you know of anyone who would be interested in more information about the invisible disability community, you can go to their website or their Facebook page, which is invisibledisabilities.com. Or their Facebook page is just invisibledisabilities. And I thank you again for this opportunity, and I hope it helps a little bit to educate everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Young, Mr. Bill Young? Hi, sir, thank you. I'm going to read this resolution, and if you want to address this, we would all enjoy that. "Whereas, Florida Renewable Energy Association is a nonprofit organization dedicated to expanding the use of clean renewable energy technologies through public awareness, political advocacy, and individual initiative. Whereas, energy from the sun is reliable, quiet, clean, sustainable, produces zero greenhouse gas emissions, electricity, produces solar thermal hot water, provides energy security, and a stable, sustainable economic source. Whereas Floridians have an inherent right to clean, sustainable environment. Whereas, environmental stewardship is the responsibility of every Floridian, and it is our duty to leave a legacy of healthy communities and natural resources for our future generations. Whereas, renewable energy education can create enduring and positive change. Whereas, all Floridians can pursue clean, renewable sources of energy without compromise in sustainable economic growth. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby proclaim the month of October as Energy Month, and encourages the citizens of Brevard County, businesses, and institutions to unite and participate in programs and activities that will protect our environment and contribute to a healthy, sustainable future. Done, ordered, and adopted this ninth day of October 2018. I make a motion to approve this resolution?"
Second.
And second by Commissioner Barfield. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes 5-0. Thank you for coming, Mr. Young, and thank you for all you do for energy and good energy.
Okay, I have some handouts I'd like to give you, if that's okay.
We can pass them down if it's easier for you.
Thank you.
Solar's been around a long time, and it's been in Florida for a while. I'd like to show you a picture. Okay, see this picture, this house? You probably can guess how old this house is, but you don't realize that that's a solar panel. Okay? So solar was made in Florida in 1905, in Miami. Okay, a lot of people don't realize in 1905. It first came out in 1890 in California, and a real estate man in Miami bought the rights to make it in Florida, and he built a factory there. So this is a Titusville house, three houses from my house. And it, back in that day, it had solar on it, okay? So if you think back before Thomas Edison and electricity, you chopped wood and put in your fireplace to create heat to get hot water, and took a lot of buckets to take a bath. Well, this allowed you not to have to work up a sweat to take a bath. Okay. For those other people who want to see the house, okay. So this is a solar-powered house, okay, but it's really old, okay? So what I want to talk about here is, this is my house, okay? I'm five houses away in historic part of Titusville, okay? So I have solar on my house, okay? And you may have had it at one time too, when someone revamped and took it away. So this is my house, okay? And so I've been in Florida since 1953, and I've lived through a lot of hurricanes. And I've used solar to make sure I have electricity when other people don't, okay? And so we have this tour. This is a solar tour we have. That's a brochure I gave you. It's a tour on solar houses and businesses. So back in 1954, a bunch of engineers with Bell Labs created a solar panel, a photovoltaic module cell, that they could power their telephones out in the desert in the country. And NASA, well, not NASA, but Department of Defense saw it and says, well, we want it for putting on our space shuttles, I mean, our satellites. So they finished making it and put it on satellites, the first satellites we launched here in our county, okay? So there's another historic thing. So back in '57, '59, when the first satellites were launched, they had solar on them, okay, which wasn't made in here, it was made in Maryland, okay? So since then, the Coast Guard and other organizations have adopted a new solar. And so at that time, the engineers back in 1955 decided they want to make a club, a solar club, so they could all communicate and share their ideas with each other. So they created the thing called ACES, American Solar Energy Society. And I'm part of the Florida part of the ACES. So there's a, each state has its own chapter, and we have one in Florida. We've been around for 25 years. And we've been doing this solar tour for 23 years, showing off houses, so that people who don't know can talk to people who know who live by solar, can see and talk to a real person who lives it, and decide if they want to do it. The cool thing about now than when I started, when I started and got my first solar panel in 1982, it was $25 a watt. Now it's three. So now it's as cheap as FPL. Is there an FPL person here? So it's as cheap as FPL now. Okay, so there's no reason not to do it, you know? I was so dedicated, I just had to have one back then. Okay, so we have a tour, and the list of houses that are in Titusville that are on the tour, you can go to our webpage and pull down the list, and you can see all the houses that are on the tour. And so that's what I'm, this is Energy Month according to the government, federal government. And last week was Energy Week, and now we have an Energy Month that we are declaring. And ACES or FREA takes and promotes this and gets people to see and learn about it. And I have solar on my house. And Florida was, between California and Florida in 1905, they were the only states that had solar factories. So that's what I want to talk about. So thank you for this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Appreciate your enthusiasm. Mr. Young, Commissioner Tabaya wants to make a comment.
Thank you for your advocacy. Just want to point out, the board here made a decision relatively recently that we were going to waive fees for the permitting for PV solar houses. So when you go around and spread that message, please let them know that we've taken the solar industry very seriously here, and we want to incentivize that as much as possible. So if these PV homes right now will no longer have to, you have to still get a permit.
Building permit fees?
Correct, for PV that has been waived by Brevard County's government.
If I could add something else, last week I was in Miami for, South Florida has a climate change coalition, and I was asked to present there and speak on a program we developed here, because I worked at the Florida Solar Energy Center. And we developed a program of putting solar on emergency shelter schools. And we got a grant to do 108. There's three schools in this county to have solar on those schools, so when, if the generator utility go down, they still work. And Opala was one of those schools, Endeavor and Palm Bay. And so now those three counties, after this conference, the closing session, those three counties pledged to team with their school board, the county and school board, and they're going to put solar on every single one of their school shelters in those three counties.
Hi, Ms. Marsha Gekki.
This is an honor for me to get to read this one also. We have a wonderful county with a lot of wonderful Chamber of Commerce people, but I think we have the best in North Brevard. We have Ms. Gekki, and you've just, I think you're amazing. You're a champion, ma'am. So it's my honor to read this. "Whereas, Ms. Marsha Gekki grew up in Titusville and attended the University of Florida. And whereas, her career began," I'm sorry, you threw me off here.
Yeah.
They like your college.
State Go Gators.
Yeah. "Her career began in event management with March of Dimes Birth Defects Foundation in 1994. And whereas, in 1998, Marsha was hired by the Titusville Chamber to serve as their Special Events Coordinator and Director of Tourism. She was responsible for all of the Chamber's non-dues fundraising, as well as tourism promotion and office management. And whereas, Marsha became President of the Chamber in 2002, and currently manages a staff of six, and oversees the daily operation of the Chamber, reporting to a Board of Directors of 22 community leaders, and serving a membership of over 700. And whereas, in February 2006, she was recognized by Leadership of Brevard as the County's top emerging leaders in the 4 Under 40 program. She is a two-time recipient of the Titusville Mayor's Cup. In 2017, she was recognized by We Venture for Excellence in Leadership. Whereas, Marsha donates countless volunteer hours for many organizations, not only North Brevard, but the entire county. And whereas, Marsha is respected, passionate, and a dedicated leader who advocates for positive change to provide a greater future for our community. Now therefore be it resolved that the County Commissioners of Brevard County hereby recognize and congratulate Marsha Gekki for 20 years of outstanding service with the Titusville Chamber of Commerce. Done and ordered this day in 2018. I make a motion to approve this resolution?"
Second.
Second by Commissioner Barfield. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes 5-0. Ma'am.
Thank you. I just would like to thank everybody for the great relationship that I've enjoyed for the last 20 years, county level, city, state, and federal level, and particularly my counterparts at the other chambers. So it takes a whole team to make things happen, and we've got a pretty good team in Brevard County. So it's been my pleasure to be a part of that for the last 20 years.
Yes, ma'am. There's two people in Brevard County, I think, that never sleep, you and Sheriff Ivy. So thank you for all you do.
I'll take that. I'd like to be in the, I don't mind being in the same sentence as Sheriff Ivy.
Sir? Oh, Commissioner Tabaya.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm honored to present on behalf of us a resolution for one of our delegation members up in Tallahassee. And before I read the resolution, I wanted to share a personal story about Senator Hucle. Back then, she was Representative Hucle, and they kind of teamed freshman members of the House up with upperclassmen. And I think they probably regret, but I was teamed up with Representative Hucle. And when you go through training, there's no sunshine. So you can talk about stuff before, and the lessons they always gave you when you're a freshman is just follow the people at the top. Just follow leadership. We'll push a button, it'll say what the chair is, and if the chair is green, you vote green, and if the chair is red, you vote red. And Dorothy said, no, that's not the way it goes. And she said, you know, sometimes they're right, and sometimes they're wrong, but you need to do the research. We were up there, and I entered in 2008 when there was a $2.5 billion shortfall. And the easiest way you do that, you overcome that shortfall, whether you're Republican or you're Democrat, you raise taxes and fees. And Dorothy, Representative Hucle, was the only Republican, the only Republican that stood up and said, no. And they didn't take away her chairmanship. She never heard another, because I think people were scared of her. And I'll tell you what, they should be, because she was one of the strongest warriors up there. Regardless, I read a lot about her being a female, it had nothing to do with her gender. She was one of the most prepared, certainly one of the most intelligent, and I think one of the most principled members up there. We were lucky, when the lines were drawn, to pick her up, so Brevard County could have more than one senator. And it was an honor certainly to work with her. It was a, it was a great loss. I don't know who will end up taking that seat, but I'll tell you right now, Brevard County will not be represented as well as it had been in the past. So it's with sadness, but I was extremely fortunate to have worked with her and learned so much from her. And so I'd like to read this resolution. "Whereas, the Honorable Senator Dorothy Hucle was born in New York City, New York, received a Bachelor's of Arts degree from the City University of New York, her Master of Arts degree from Columbia University, and her Juris Doctor degree from St. John's University, and then shortly after moved to Florida in 1998. And whereas, Senator Hucle's first public office held was Councilwoman to the Town of Ponce Inlet, followed by her election to Vice Mayor of the City of Port Orange, and subsequently elected to the mayor. And whereas, Senator Hucle was then elected to the Florida House of Representatives in 2004, serving all eight years, and then by the support of her community, was elected to the Florida Senate in 2012, continuing to the present, representing District 14. And whereas, a former elementary school teacher, Senator Hucle's passion was education and advocating for children. She served as the Chairwoman for the Committee on Education in the Florida Senate, and worked to expand the Bright Futures Scholarship, as well as focus on teaching financial literacy in schools. And whereas, the community that has grown to know and love her suffers a devastating loss, she can be remembered as a loving mother, wife, and daughter to her family, her dedication to children's education, her kindness to everyone she met." to children and education, her kindness to everyone she met, her understanding and sympathy to those in need, her leadership in the state of Florida, and her friendship that spans across Florida and beyond. And whereas Senator Hugel passed away on October 2nd, 2018, at the age of 72, and will be sorely missed by her friends, family, and her community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County does hereby unanimously recognize and commend her for her outstanding commitment to public service, her love and dedication to her family and her friends, and her never-ending devotion to her community. I'd like to make a motion that we pass this resolution, Madam Chair.
Second.
Thank you. A motion by Commissioner Tobias, second by Commissioner Barfield. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And we're lucky enough to have a representative from her office, Angelique Rinaldi, if she can come up and share a little bit, that would be.
Ma'am.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Tobias. Thank you, County Council Commission. Thank you, Commissioner Tobias, Brevard County Commissioners. It's an incredible honor and privilege to be here today to say thank you. On behalf of Senator Dorothy Hugel, her staff, and her family, since before her Brevard County office ribbon-cutting, which many of you were there, Senator Hugel had a love for Brevard County, a love that only grew during the time she was privileged to represent it. She had the pleasure of working with many of you on important local issues, and on behalf of her constituents. We are very grateful to the commission for taking time from its deliberations to pay tribute to Senator Dorothy Hugel here this evening. May her family and all of those that knew her and loved her be comforted by her lasting legacy and fond memories. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, I want a picture. We'll send it to her.
Okay. Commissioner Barfield?
Yes, it's my honor to introduce a resolution for the Making Strides Against Breast Cancer Day. And I'm doing this for Commissioner Smith, who's on the line still, I hope. And I'd like for young ladies to come up here, please. It's my honor to read the resolution, and I'd just like to say, we thank you for all that y'all do. I don't think there's anyone in this room who doesn't know someone whose family, or a friend, or whatever, it's been affected by some of the breast cancer. And I just, it's an honor for me to be able to read this resolution. Whereas, American Cancer Society, Making Strides Against Breast Cancer Walk, is not a race. It is a celebration of survivorship, an occasion to express hope, and a shared goal to end a disease that threatens the lives of so many people we love. This non-competitive 5K, which is 3.1 miles, walk raises money for breast cancer research, education, advocacy, and patient services. It is the largest outside fundraiser in Brevard County. And whereas the American Cancer Society, the nation's largest voluntary health agency, is dedicated to eliminating cancer as a major health problem by preventing cancer, saving lives from cancer, and diminishing suffering from cancer through research, education, advocacy, and services. Whereas proceeds from Making Strides Against Breast Cancer are used solely for breast cancer funding, they have terrific free patient services for people right here in our community, such as Road to Recovery, which is free rides to and from cancer treatment. Reach to Recovery, train survivor volunteers who give a measure of comfort and an opportunity for emotional grounding and informed decision-making. And Look Good, feel better to teach female cancer patients beauty techniques and to boost self-image during chemo or radiation treatments. And whereas anyone and everyone interested in fighting breast cancer can form a team and enter the race to be held Saturday, October 27th, 2018, starting at the Avenue Vieira. Registration starts at 7:00 a.m., and the walk follows at 9:00 a.m. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby proclaim October 27th, 2018, as Making Strides Against Breast Cancer Day, done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this ninth day of October, 2018 A.D. Madam Chair, I make a motion that we pass this resolution.
Have a motion by Commissioner Barfield, and second by Commissioner Isnardi. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Thank you.
Go ahead, speak.
I'm actually going to let one of my volunteers speak.
On behalf of the American Cancer Society, and my wonderful committee that I get to work with here with Making Strides Against Breast Cancer, we thank you guys so much for your proclamation of Making Strides Against Breast Cancer Day. And we do encourage you guys all, as well as the remainder of the county, to come out to our walk on October 27th at the Avenue Vieira.
So the next one is, the Resolution for Real Men Wear Pink. Commissioner Smith, are you there?
I am.
Okay, I'm going to read this. But what I just showed them is I have my pink socks on, my pink shirt on with a pink tie. So I just want you to know, I'm totally in support of this.
Well, I want you to know that I noticed that, and I was very impressed by your pink socks.
Okay.
But I have to tell you, I'll wear my pink socks at the next meeting, and my pink socks are prettier than your pink socks.
I'm not going to get into that. Okay, I'm going to read the resolution. Whereas the First National Real Men Wear Pink Day will be October 10th, 2018, and will continue every year on the second Wednesday of October. And whereas Real Men Wear Pink Day is a chance to raise awareness and our mission to save more lives from breast cancer. And whereas Real Men Wear Pink gives men a leadership role in the fight against breast cancer. Community leaders around the nation use the power of pink to raise awareness and money for the American Cancer Society's breast cancer initiatives, including innovative research, patient services, and education around screenings and risk reduction. It's one important way we're attacking cancer from every angle. And whereas on this day, we're asking people to show their support for the cause by wearing pink and supporting Real Men Wear Pink. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby proclaim October 10th, 2018, as Real Men Wear Pink Day, done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this ninth day of October, 2018 A.D. Madam Chair, I make a motion that we pass this resolution.
Thank you, sir. I have a motion by Commissioner, Mr. Barfield, second by Commissioner Isnardi. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Thank you. Commissioner Smith, would you like to make some comments, sir?
Well, I would just like to thank everybody for the recognition that we're giving to the breast cancer awareness and the Real Men Wear Pink. We have a long way to go, but every long journey begins with a first small step, and we've made an awful lot of strides in the right direction to get this done.
Thank you, sir. I have two cards on item F1. Is there any other items that the commission would like to hear pulled separately? Okay, so if we can have a motion to approve all the other items except F1?
I make a motion that we pass the consent agenda with the exception of F1.
Have a motion on the table?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Isnardi. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Item F1.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is a request to advertise for the Grand Canal muck removal project. The requested action includes authorizing advertisement, confirming the review and qualification committee members, authorizing the county manager or commission chair to execute construction contracts, authorizing the county manager to execute task orders for engineering services that would be mostly associated with construction oversight, and budget change requests as necessary.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioners, if you don't have any comments, I'm going to go ahead and call these two public speakers. Ms. Barker, you'll be next, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, coming to the front.
This is my first time being here. So I live in-
If you just state, thank you, your name and address.
Sorry. My name is Sandra Sullivan. I live in South Patrick Shores. So I am aware that there are three new, there's additional muck testing that has three tests on the Grand Canal, and I wanted to talk about my concerns about the mucked dredging. Local governments are the delegated authority from the state to protect public health, safety, and general welfare of the residents. And for a long time, we've known about the World War II chemical dumps on Patrick Air Force Base and under South Patrick Shores, but have failed, in my opinion, reasonable action. My neighbors have found concerning levels of thallium, radium, lead, and arsenic in their wells. In addition, from the last RAB meeting, they discussed chemicals in the groundwater, the PFOS, the PCBs, PHs, VOCs, and the RCRA metals, arsenic, barium, cadmium, chromium, mercury, lead, selenium, silver, also vinyl chloride, and TRPHs. An analysis of these RAB documents is, needs to be made to determine what has entered the groundwater. These enter the groundwater and migrate to the Banana River. We need to know what we're dealing with, because if you don't test for them, you won't find them. This is beyond the expertise of the county and requires an environmental engineer assessment. Kurt Smith's group made a promise in my yard when we found that the old military dump is beneath our neighborhood, that the heads of the canals west of South Patrick Shores, and that the county will stop with moving ahead with the dredging if there were problems with those tests. And they have failed to fulfill the promise, to test the heads of the canals. Regarding health and safety, you need to stop the process of obtaining dredging contract and instead focus on testing the canals where the stormwater and groundwater enter the canals west of the old military dump in South Patrick Shores. Regarding health and safety, with PFOS, PFOA is present, you need to verify from an environmental engineering firm with signed and sealed report that it's safe to dredge and deposit muck on the island near the dredging. Regarding health and safety, you need to investigate not only the PFOS, PFOA, that has migrated through aging sewage infrastructure that you failed to reasonably upgrade over the years, how other toxic chemicals have infiltrated and spread contamination from Sewage beach sewer and south beaches plants. Regarding health and safety, how these toxic chemicals have infiltrated and spread contamination into the Banana River. And it is imperative to investigate how far plumes have traveled and their risks to citizens. Regarding health and safety, we need an update on action to involve state and federal resources regarding the dump under South Patrick's neighborhood, and also consider their involvement to clean up these and the other issues with the plumes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ms. Courtney Barker?
Courtney Barker, City of Satellite Beach. I'm also on the Citizens Oversight Committee for the Lagoon Tax. I wanted to encourage you to move forward with this action tonight, which is the advertisement for the project. The concerns of the residents in Satellite Beach and South Patrick Shores are absolutely very, very important to consider. The testing is undergoing, it's underway with the county, as well as the city, and these concerns are very valid. But I think you will have these test results back before the construction, and they can be discussed and debated at that time. But to hold up this project, I think, would be a mistake. We have a lot of projects that we're trying to get off the ground with the Lagoon Tax, and we get a lot of criticism, I think, out in the community that nothing is happening. And it's these delays that we need to move past and get them going. I think the concerns can be addressed while we're moving forward with the project to make sure that we stay on track and stay on time. Okay? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. That's the end of the comment cards. Ms. Barker, we are doing testing, correct?
We are testing about 40 wells around the county for the PFAS contamination. Those are in the South Patrick Shores area, in the Cocoa Beach area, and then also on the mainland, north, central, and south mainland. We also have a control down in the south beaches. In addition to that, we're testing the water in the lagoon, north, central, south Indian River, north, central, south Banana River. And then, as Ms. Sullivan mentioned, we're testing muck in the Grand Canal system. There are six samples being pulled from the Grand Canal system, as well as one offshore of Patrick Air Force Base, and one down south in Melbourne Beach as a control.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioners, any comments? Commissioner Barfield?
What are, I know we're monitoring sampling for the fluorinated contaminants. What else are we, and this for analysis, what else are we looking for?
So the majority of the samples, we are only looking for the perfluorinated, the PFAS, PFOA contaminants. In the South Patrick Shores area, we're also planning two wells, sort of in the heart of what is thought to be the old munitions dump landfill area, where we're testing for the full list of, I believe it's 126 EPA priority pollutants, herbicides, pesticides, radionuclides. We're trying to be very comprehensive in anything that might be there, that could be a concern, to test for that, to find out whether it's there. We've been through the reports that were done back in 1991, 92, by the state and federal agencies of what they found at that time, and we're making sure that we're sampling for any of those contaminants that were found at that time.
Okay, Commission?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I would like to just take a moment and inform the public that my staff and many of the county's staff visited Sandra Sullivan's backyard, and we saw the outline of an awful lot of debris that was sound-tested, radar-tested, to be underground. We don't know what those objects are, what they consist of, but it's obvious there's a lot of, for want of a better word, stuff there. So I reached out to Congressman Posey's office and his staff, and spoke to him, and said that we need to get something going on with the federal government. So they are reaching out to the DEP and EPA, and they also said they were going to reach out to the CDC because of the contamination we have in the water. I also reached out to Tallahassee. I sit on the board with the Indian River Lagoon Council with the Associate Deputy to the DEP, Drew Bartlett. And I called his office, and he and his staff have agreed to reach out to the state levels of DEP and EPA as well. So we've got an awful lot of people looking at this. So, we've got an awful lot of people looking at this, and we need to make determinations as to how much contamination we have, and whatever is there, what we can do about it. I just wanted to bring that to the public's attention.
Thank you, sir, appreciate the information. Commissioner Isnardi?
Yes, just a quick question. Do we anticipate before, after we receive the bids and the mucking begins, do we anticipate we'll have those testing results back before then?
Yes, the muck samples were actually polled last Friday. The labs are taking three to four weeks to send results back, but we should definitely have the results back before the bid opening.
And obviously, you'll notify us if anything comes, okay, great.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Commission, do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we move forward with this and give permission to advertise and to issue the RFPs.
Okay, Commissioner Barfield motion, Commissioner Tobias, that was your second, sir?
Yes.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, passes 5-0. Moving into public comments. Thank you ma'am. Ms. Sandra Sullivan, and Ms. Gail Meredith, you'll be next.
Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. I figure I'd do this a little bit like a show and tell. So, my yard has areas as large as thirty feet long of debris from an old military dump. I have read the FDEP report, the EPA report, the Army report, and a lot of other reports. And from firsthand reports that was in the dump, there are reports of fifty-five gallon containers of unspecified liquids. There is, there are barrels of oil, and there is barrels of hydraulic fluid, and there are Jeeps, and there are ammunitions, and a probability of DDT barrels being buried. And of course, the base was doing a lot of photography, and we don't know if those chemicals are in there. But, I started, we dug a few things, and when I spoke to the county about involving them, and when I felt that those promises were not being met, I said, "I'm gonna go out digging my yard a little bit longer." And so, I did. And so, a little over a week ago, I dug up, I went out for five minutes and dug a few holes, and I dug up a mortar practice bomb. And you can imagine the fear of digging that up with my, as my thirteen-year-old filmed that. But just so you have an idea of why I'm concerned, this is, I don't know if you can see from there, but this is just a few of the items that have been dug up. There's lead in here, there's copper in here, there's metal in here, there is chemicals in here of some strange sort, there's a old transformer here with cloth-covered wires, and this is known for PCBs. Okay? So, we have lead, the lead is, there's glass in there that's gone rainbowey, because it would've had petroleum disolates in there. But anyway, this is very, this is, I have a half an acre yard, and this is very concerning to me with three children, that I sit and I don't know whether they'll live here anymore, I just wanna run away. I have two properties back-to-back, and we have higher-than-normal cancers here. And there really needs, that when I say about health and safety, I really mean it. I mean, there are four instances of children in a small area that have cancer, and because it affects children more. So, I wanna appeal to your hearts, as well as your logic, that nobody buys a property and thinks, "Should I look to see if there's a dump under my house?" No, we look at schools, and we look at the neighborhood, and we look at our quality of life, and we never expect to find a dump under our house. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Ms. Gail Meredith?
Gail Meredith from Satellite Beach. Good afternoon Commissioners, good evening. I wanted to speak again to the issue we spoke about at the last commission meeting, involving the severe cuts to the poor, and to the organizations that serve the poor. And I hope that, I think it's probably too late for this budget session, for this to be reconsidered, but I wanna restate that I think that any civilized place takes care of the poor, and takes care of the arts, and has a transportation system, certainly in America. And many of you purport to be Christians, and we know what Jesus said about that, about caring for the poor, that it's the most important mission of a Christian. And I think our community seems to be missing the boat, and I wanted to repeat that again to you, and say that I still hope that in the future, we will come to our senses again, and look at the big picture, and consider caring for the poor and the organizations that serve them. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Mr. Daniel Willman, and I just wanna make one comment on that, we didn't make any comments on it the other night, but on the ballot in November, you're gonna see an ability to vote in extra homestead, if that goes through, and we're not able to do, there's a chance there could be a $12 million cut next year. So, the reason that, I don't know, the fact that we didn't cut anything this year, I think was pretty benevolent, because it's pretty tight right now. So, I just wanted to make that comment right now. Mr. Daniel Willman?
Good afternoon Commissioners. I just wanted to recognize your all's initiative in the testing of the groundwater in South Patrick Shores, the lagoon waters, I know the lagoon is a big thing right now, and you guys are taking a very good initiative with that, the testing of the muck also. I just had a very productive meeting with Ms. Virginia Barker today, where we learned that you're gonna be testing the muck. The muck has actually already been sampled, and tests have been sent out. That was a big concern of mine, that a project was gonna go forward in dredging without knowing what was in that muck, and I just wanted to recognize that you guys are taking an initiative here with that, and sampling, and trying to make sure that we get ahead of this, and that's a good step forward, and I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you for that, sir, and thank you, Ms. Barker, for all you're doing also. Mr. Still Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Still Bailey?
Hi, I'm Stell Bailey from Cocoa, Florida. I'm also known as the girl that had cancer, and in the same year that I had cancer, my brother, my father, my uncle, our family dog, all were diagnosed. So, I'm an advocate for those that are in Satellite Beach, the beachside communities, Cocoa Beach, Melbourne, I have been working with them. We spent over $10,000 of our own money to do our own independent testing. So, I wanted to come up here, because we obviously have a lot of concerns, but I also wanna recognize Virginia Barker and Commissioner Smith for taking the initiative to do testing, and to really step up to the plate and help us. I think there's a lot of people feeling a void, and we need to fill that void and help them feel secure, and know that we are doing something to clean this up. I think one of my big concerns is contaminated fish with the PFOA and PFOS. We did our own independent testing, and it shows that it is in the river, and I think our next step is we're gonna go ahead and work with the scientists who did the testing with the dolphins, and see if they will help us with testing the different fishes. So, I just wanna say thank you, thank you so much, we appreciate the initiative, and we recognize that you guys are trying to help us here.
Thank you ma'am.
Thank you.
Tiffany Johnson?
Good evening Commissioners. I really didn't come here with the intent to speak tonight, but this has been an organization that I have taken kindly to in the last two months, because myself has been a part of this for many, many years. My grandfather, born and raised in Satellite Beach, he was a football coach for many years, Bill Lowe. My mother, her sisters, my aunt is still a teacher at Satellite High School. We lived for a short period of time in South Patrick Homes, South Patrick Shores, in a rental home. Throughout that period of time, both of our dogs got tumors. We moved away, four months later, my mother got breast cancer, thirty-seven years old. After Aaron Brockovich had come here, well, it was actually three days prior, I learned, my parents were separated.
Okay.
So, I spent some time on the west coast of Florida as well, and went to a high school called Bay Shore High School, and come to find out, these same things are happening there. My father was also diagnosed with lymphocytic leukemia, six and a half years ago, we've been battling. I'm here today because we have to protect our children, like, we've got to get something inside of our school systems, this is, you know, independent testing's being done, we can confirm that we have extremely high levels of PFOA and PFOSs, we know that the radium is out of control here. And so, I'd really just kind of like to ask you, what are, have we looked into the school systems, what are we doing in regards to protecting our kids? I have some great ideas that I plan to come back, much more prepared to do, I was really just trying to feel out today. But just as I did when I went to Satellite Beach, I just feel compelled to say that, you know, we stand together in unity, and we are better together. We live in a world where there's so much hate and division that it's heartbreaking. We stand for a lot of really good things in this county, we have a lot of tremendous people, and we really have to kind of stick together here. We have to lay our pillows on our heads every night and feel good about what we're doing. And we can't take back what's been done, it's not gonna fix it, anything that we do tomorrow. You know, I read an article the other day, it talked about California and their water issues. It's taken them twenty-seven years to take an action plan and make it become an action. It takes a very long time. But we have developed preventative measures through technology and different resources, science, and other things, that we can start being proactive and protecting ourselves while we continue to take the initiative to make a difference in our community. And, you know, we want people to come here, right? We got tons of businesses, people love Cocoa Beach, Ron John Surf Shop, right, one-of-a-kind, like, we bring a lot of people here. And Cocoa Beach has been one of the highest levels reported in their groundwater. We know that our children play in the sprinklers, we fill our pools, the little pools, people are using this water every single day for their daily lives, and a lot of them don't have the means to protect themselves by themselves. So, it takes us to kind of stand up and be a voice for them, so. I encourage you guys, I thank you guys, you know, I appreciate everything that you're doing, and hope that we can continue to work together.
Thank you ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Charles Tovey?
Yeah, thank you. Charles Tovey, 2555 Roberts Road, Melbourne. I wrote on a card I wanted to address about the flooding issues, and before I go into that, I grew up in Satellite Beach, one of my good friends was one of the first people diagnosed. I ran around, those were my stomping grounds, I drank the water. There's an uncanny problem that we've had, and this is a symptom of what has been going on for years and years and years. And, good wishes on everybody. But, what I wanted to mention was about the flooding, and how, first of all, the road conditions, I believe that that had a big impact on our lagoon, and all the, a lot of the contaminants and things have been leached out from our roads in the conditions that they are, and if you improve the roads, you'll improve a percentage. Although people don't know me, or know what I've done, but I believe that one of my works have been the biggest impact of the lagoon and restoring it, and I unclogged it, and I did it for years, and I showed you a picture of something that was done, and I did it for years and years and years, and I have video. The flooding, in Tokyo, they have two football field tanks underneath the city of Tokyo in order to offset the flooding, and all their rainwater goes into these storage tanks, and I've mentioned some things called DIRAs, Designated Environmental Recharge Areas. We can process this water, and so what they do is just hold it so it doesn't flood it, and then they put it into the river, I forget the name of it offhand, but what we can do is recycle that water before it gets into the lagoon, and we're already recycling sewage water, and then we're pouring that into the lagoon. It's a no-brainer about the feds cleaning the dredging of the lagoon, that should be done, the state should have an impact on it, and the county should have an impact. And I'm coming, I'm finishing a lot of my personal issues, and I'll produce what I've been working on for years and years and years. The flooding is a symptom, it's all a symptom of our behavior for years and years, for decades. And now, we wanna do something about it, and what I wanna suggest is that you visit a third-world country, 'cause we're just one day away from being another third-world country. It's totally impacted their environment, and they're looking for other ways and means, just like Tokyo did. I'm out of time, dropped my cards, haven't been here, dad turned ninety, mom turned eighty-two. I'm not up here for me, although I have a lot of personal issues I wish you'd address. I'm up here for the county, the lagoon, the river, and the rest of the country and community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That's the last of the public comments, we're gonna move into public hearings, item H1.
Commissioners, this is the ordinance amending the Barefoot Bay Recreation District Charter to impose term limits pursuant to a referendum. This procedure is established by statute, you create the ordinance for the district. The Recreation District Attorney is here to address any questions that you may have.
Commissioners, do we have any questions, or do we have a motion, or?
Madam Chair, if there's no questions, a motion to amend Barefoot Bay Recreation District Charter to impose term limits.
Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Tobias, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Isnardi, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, passes 5-0. Moving into item two.
Commissioners, we received a petition to vacate a portion of right-of-way located in Sunnyland Beach, which is in Melbourne Beach. The petitioner states that they would like to use the area to enhance their landscaping and improve the security to their property. Proper notifications were issued, with no objections.
Thank you, sir. I do have one card on this, sir, is this for questions only?
Yeah, it is. Grant the team turning toward the property.
Thank you. Commissioner Tobias, did you have any questions or comments, sir?
No, Madam Chair, if there's no comments, motion to vacate right-of-way in Melbourne Beach for Thomas and Elizabeth Vitella.
Okay, I have a motion on the table, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Barfield, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, passes 5-0. Moving into items H3. Ms. Barker, you were gonna request that we heard item four before item H, correct ma'am?
Yes, ma'am, that would be very helpful.
Okay, so, we're gonna go to item H4.
So, H4 is the ordinance replacing the 150-day conventional septic moratorium. There are two parts to this requested action, one is to approve the second and hopefully final reading of the proposed ordinance codifying an onsite treatment and disposal system nitrogen reduction overlay that would require advanced septic systems that remove sixty-five percent of the nitrogen loading. And then, the second part of the requested action is to direct staff regarding your interest in developing a grant program to assist the community in complying with this new ordinance.
Thank you ma'am. Commissioners, if we don't have any comments, I have some comment cards. Okay, I'm gonna call Mr. Frank Gaitis, and Mr. Andy Steinberg, you'll be next, sir.
Good evening, my name is Frank Gaitis, I'm the Director of Habitat and Environmental Restoration for the Coastal Conservation Association of Florida. CCA is a nonprofit organization with over a hundred thousand members nationwide, and over twenty thousand in Florida. We're a, the purpose of our organization is to advise and educate the public on the conservation of marine sources, and our objective is to conserve, promote, and enhance the present and future availability of those coastal resources for the benefit and enjoyment of the general public. Septic systems are currently the largest single source of nitrogen leaching into the Indian River Lagoon in Brevard County. CCA Florida is in full support of the Brevard County Ordinance replacing the 150-day septic moratorium. We are in agreement that all new onsite sewage treatment and disposal systems within forty to sixty meters of the lagoon and on the barrier islands require aerobic or advanced septic systems that remove at least sixty-five percent nitrogen before being released into the groundwater. This is an important step towards reducing the amount of nitrogen- is an important step towards reducing the amount of nitrogen and other pollutants currently loading into the lagoon, and an important step in restoring the lagoon back to health. The county is currently spending millions of dollars in taxpayer money to remove these and other nutrients from the lagoon, and it's critical that you stop allowing more nutrients to enter it. Thank you.
Sir, Mr. Andy Steinberg. Lou Kotnick, you'll be next, sir.
Good evening. Andy Steinberg, I'm, I live in Vero Beach, not in Brevard, but I live on the lagoon. I am chairman of the Habitat Committee for CCA statewide, representing 41 different chapters, including one here in Brevard County. And to keep it simple, what he said, what Frank just said about going forward with changing our ruling for septic tanks, we've got to save our lagoon for our children. That's what CCA and Coastal Conservation is all about.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Kotnick and Gail Meredith, you'll be next, ma'am.
Great. Thank you very much. Lou Kotnick, Melbourne, and I'm here representing the Brevard Indian River Lagoon Coalition. We support the adoption of the moratorium, not the moratorium, but the ordinance. And that's support unanimous among our board members. We agree with the logic that got you initially to look at the question of whether we can and should impose restrictions and improvements, requirements by septics. We've been impressed with the staff analysis and have attended the meetings and reviewed the documents. We were very pleased, you may remember a yell at the last vote here where you unanimously approved the first part of this ordinance. Upwards of 60,000 septics contributing 18% of the nutrients into the lagoon, and then an additional 800 that we're adding each year. We need to start addressing this issue head-on, and I believe the ordinance that you all voted for last time is that first step. It's great to see the research and science work that has gone into this, and equally the unanimous support that you gave during that first reading. So the bottom line, we fully support the program, and we also encourage the assistance to low-income people that will be affected by this, and offer you thanks for your work and leadership on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Meredith, Philip Stasek, you'll be next, sir.
Gail Meredith, Satellite Beach, Brevard Indian River Lagoon Coalition. Thank you very much, Commissioners, for your excellent work on this, on these improvements to the septic rules. My family came here in 1970, and so we've watched what's happened to the lagoon. It's been heartbreaking. And this seems to be really a good first step to bring regulations to the picture. There's been before this a lack of will to regulate and to enforce what we know to be best practices. And we're hoping that, we're going forward now, to really take good care of this national, this national treasure that we're blessed with. And speaking to the issue of helping low-income people be able to afford to upgrade their septic systems, we strongly support that. We feel that people of wealth should be able to partner with the county to afford these systems, and that we need to begin to engage them in a way that allows them to, to use their wealth to help us bring the lagoon up to where it should be. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Stasek, Tony Sasso, you'll be next, sir.
Good evening, Commissioner Pritchett and Staff, or County Commissioners. Thank you so much, first of all, for listening to us tonight. My name is Phil Stasek, North Merritt Island, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Space Coast Progressive Alliance. And we do indeed endorse this ordinance. This is very, very important. We've all spoken to you before. I've been in the workshops with you. We all agree that we must defend our Indian River Lagoon. It is one of our most precious resources. We understand the value of this, not only to the quality of our lives, but also the value financially to our community. So we certainly do support this ordinance. We do stand with the Indian River Lagoon Coalition, and they and their work in defense of our lagoon. And frankly, we also support the transition of as many homes as possible from septic to sewer. We encourage what you have done in raising the standards of septic systems, to basically get as many homes that are on septic and that cannot go to sewer to the highest possible standards that, that technology can provide. What you've done is very good, and we must do more. We must expand and update our county's sewer systems. Our sewer systems are outdated, and they are insufficient to meet our needs. I think everybody in this room understands that. Our sewer systems, for a long time, have been neglected, and I believe that everybody agrees that it's time to fix that. Whenever we have a major storm, we have releases of raw sewage, and this is completely unacceptable. I think, again, we all agree. So the question is, why aren't we proceeding faster? We must take this seriously. We must get the money to make this happen. We must do the planning needed to execute as quickly as possible so that we don't become a third-world country with regard to raw sewage in our water, the death of our lagoon. I do want to take a minute to say, I have actually personally been in some of our wastewater treatment facilities, and the people that work there are amazing. These county employees work very hard with outdated equipment, with insufficient supplies. And frankly, when you look at folks like Virginia Barker and their team, planning, working to improve the quality of life here in Brevard, we, they're all, I think we take them all for granted, is what I'm saying. So I want to say thanks to you for taking the leadership to make this happen. I encourage you to do more and to do it as quickly as you possibly can. So thank you very much. Do you have any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sasso, Pam LaSalle, you'll be next, ma'am.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Commissioners, nice to see you all again. And please don't ever make me follow Mr. Stasek again. That's not fair. And also, I want to apologize to Commissioner Smith and that I'm not in pink. I wore my, last night and the night before, I wore my pink shirts, and I ran out of clean ones. But our Keep Brevard Beautiful staff is out in their logoed pink t-shirts working on our beaches. So we do support that. I'm here actually representing Keep Brevard Beautiful tonight and in support of this. As you know, we do the lagoon-friendly lawn program. Right after that huge fish kill, we started it up, and then in about a year now, we've got over 300 lawns that are stopping fertilizer and pesticides and other lawn debris from going into the lagoon, and we're trying to expand that dramatically. But as Dr. Duane de Vries says, it's all of the above. It's that muck removal. It's all these other things that we're looking at, including sewage and septic. So we very much support what you're doing. You know, I'm here, I'm listening to these folks from Satellite Beach. I live in Cocoa Beach. We're really concerned. We're all concerned about all this stuff in our water and the things that we're doing to our planet and here in our backyards. And we want to see it fixed. And I am mainly here to say thank you, and please, 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 and that's not a James Brown imitation. That's please, 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 keep taking this, this great aggressive stand that you're doing. You've got great people like Virginia Barker, your staff. You all are doing it for us, and we're going to be behind you to help you every bit of the way to help make this right. I've talked to you before about being a Boy Scout leader, and we'd go out to the Thousand Islands in camp. And before we would do that, our scouts would take their swim test in the lagoon. My sons did that. Wouldn't dare do that now. And I've got a Cub Scout pack that we're just starting, and I want them to be able to swim in the lagoon again. So please keep doing what you're doing, and please be as aggressive as you possibly can to help us fix these problems for the next generation. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Ms. LaSalle, Mary Sparr, you'll be next, ma'am.
Pam LaSalle, Viera. I was opposed to the sales tax. I'm still opposed to the sales tax. I think they're regressive. I think it should have been, if we insisted a property tax, because then it would have been more equitably distributed. They're regressive also, though, but this idea of grants is kind of adding insult to injury. I know of two women, one, they were both are rather, I wouldn't say impoverished, but they're not well off. One lives near the water, though, and she really wanted this tax to pass so she wouldn't have to pay for her new septic system. And the other lady I know has no idea what's going on, but I know she, in her 70s, is still having to work and has to ride the bus to work. They're both paying sales taxes. The lady that needed the new septic system a few months after the sales tax passed, got a new car. I just think it's very inequitable. I don't think that we should be making capital improvements for people who could go and finance them if they didn't have the money for them. Other counties have done it. I believe Martin County provided that they would give them interest-free loans while they had like a 10-year period to pay for it. But that wasn't in our lagoon plan, and I realize people should have read what they voted for. But here we are with these funds, and I really don't feel like we should be subsidizing new construction costs for the lagoon tax, funds, using them for that. I would, it's just, they're bad luck. I paid an impact fee where I live. I get to pay a CDD tax where I live. I get to pay county taxes where I live, and now I get to pay, and I'm not anywhere near the water, and I get to pay the sales tax for the lagoon. And I just feel like it's our responsibility to try to not take advantage of any more people that are compromised financially, because the sales tax takes a lot more out of the pocket of a person who doesn't make very much money as opposed to someone who's wealthy. And the property tax would have compensated for that. Any questions?
No, ma'am. Thank you. Thanks. Ms. Mary and Mr. Platt, you'll be next, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Mary Sparr, and I'm speaking for Turtle Coast Sierra Club. Sierra Club strongly supports this ordinance to protect the Indian River Lagoon. And we were really heartened the last time at the September 25th meeting to see you all working together to help the lagoon. Thank you so much. You decided to review the ordinance after the report from Applied Ecology was finalized, and that'll be before August of 2020. And one change you mentioned you were going to look at is whether or not to make the ordinance countywide. I'd like to bring to your attention that the report from Applied Ecology is only for the Indian River Lagoon watershed. The report provided analysis of different parts of the lagoon watershed in terms of flooding potential and soils. And what's not a part of that report is an analysis for the other part of the county, which is the St. John's River watershed. So please ask to have Applied Ecology research the St. John's River watershed, as well as the Indian River Lagoon watershed, and complete this research by August of 2020, so you can have the studies that will enable you to decide whether the advanced septic treatment system should become countywide. We have a major, major challenge with the St. John's watershed, and the situation is different from that of the Indian River Lagoon. And I hope that the St. John's River watershed research could study not only nutrient pollution from septic systems, but also the effects of the application of sewage sludge from sewer plants on agricultural lands in the St. John's watershed. Residual sewage sludge is called biosalads, and it is high in nitrogen and phosphorus. And when you hear high in phosphorus, alarm bells should be ringing. For example, Desert Red Ranch applies 40,000 tons to 30,000 acres, and that's just Class B biosalads. And we do not know how much other biosalads in the form of double A they apply. So this is a real alarming situation for those of us who are aware of it. And so the St. John's River watershed has a combination of septic pollution and biosolids pollution, both of which are byproducts of human waste. In conclusion, Sierra Club thanks you for considering this important septic ordinance. It's really a major step forward. And please ask for a study of the St. John's watershed to be completed in time for your planned review.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Platt and Ms. Courtney Barker, you'll be next, ma'am.
Beau Platt from Melbourne, Florida. My family got here from another part of Florida back in the early 50s, and there was about 23,000 people living in Brevard at that time. Now, we've had about a 2,500% population increase since that time. I don't think there's a lot of areas in the country that have had that kind of population growth. So there was a lot of things we could do 70 years ago, and the lagoon could recover from it, that we can't do now. We have to change our bad habits and our bad behavior. So I'm speaking in support of the ordinance. It's not a magic bullet. Septic's a big part of the, of the nutrient influx to the lagoon. Of course, we've got the muck flux, stormwater, there's other parts of the puzzle also that still need to be considered. But I commend you on your foresight to look at this. I do also support the grant idea. I feel it should be needs-based. In a perfect world, there'd be plenty of money, and everybody would be able to take advantage of it. But the fact that this applies to new septics, people that amortize this over 15 or 30 years, the cost will be pretty insignificant. And I think people with more wealth should be able to handle that. And like Ms. Sparr said, I think the next move is to look west. This nutrients from the septics don't just flow towards the lagoon. They also flow towards the St. John's. And as Ms. Sparr said, it's got its problems. So I hope you'll, down the road, consider that also. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Courtney Barker, City of Satellite Beach, also a Citizens Oversight Committee member. I don't want to take up too much of your time. I just want to say how proud I am of being a Brevard County resident right now. I think you guys are doing a great job here. And I think, you know, once again, Brevard County will be a leader in addressing environmental issues, particularly with our water quality. And this is a great step in that direction. So I thank all of you for working hard on this. I think the staff did a wonderful job in putting this together. So I am obviously in favor of this ordinance. But I also think, if you do want to put a grant program together, which I think is a great idea, it would be good if we could send that back to the Oversight Committee so we can debate it and, you know, kind of move through that discussion with the, you know, the community members that tend to come to those meetings. I think that would give us time to really put one together that would meet the objectives of the plan and take in all those considerations together. And I think it would be great if we could have those conversations with the other departments of the county that do that same, same work, and we can maybe make that fit together. Okay? I appreciate it. Thank you.
So Ms. Barker, so like if, we got part of it, we get it approved tonight. So that's what I was thinking. I'm glad you brought that up, that we would send it to the lagoon council, and you guys could come back to something that wouldn't violate the program we have set up also.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
And how to make it work so it fits within the plan.
And also fit with all the other programs that are out there for the very similar things. So CDBG does a lot of that work, and, you know, maybe we can meet with some of the cities and try to put together, you know, some of the parameters with them on how to do that.
That's really good, because that was giving me a little bit of a heartburn, too. Like Ms. LaSalle said, I struggle with that. So, and, you know, we told the taxpayers, like Commissioner Barfield said last week, exactly this is what we're doing with it. So I want to make sure that we protect the plan also. So thank you for that suggestion. That's the end of the comment cards, Commissioners. Do you have Do you have any comments? And if not, I thought maybe we could approve the first part of it and then have discussion on the second part of it, the second reading. I don't know either, sir. Why don't you come on up?
Yeah, you had it for number three, sir.
Number three. Did you want to speak now instead? You certainly may.
Okay.
Or you want to do both? Okay.
Okay, good. I'm Vince Lamb from South Merritt Island, and I, at first, I want to certainly express my support of this ordinance and my appreciation of the leadership that you have provided. I think with the current condition of the lagoon, we can't afford to miss any opportunities to protect and restore the lagoon, and this is certainly a valid one. When this goes forward, though, one of the things that certainly struck my mind with this is that it's affecting only new properties and maybe properties that are remodeling and add a bathroom or something. That's basically all this ordinance affects. And I think there are a lot of other existing conventional septic tank systems out there. I happen to own one of them, and a lot of them are in areas like South Merritt Island where there's no hope of getting a sewer line, so there's not going to be any opportunity for conversion of septic to sewer. So I would like to see, not tonight, of course, but moving forward and maybe going back to the COC, I think some sort of a grant program or matching funds or financial incentives. I think there are a lot of people, and I'm kind of one of them, that, you know, that if there was some matching funds or something to encourage me to add something to my conventional septic system that would then take the nutrients out, then, you know, I would be very happy to see that. I would participate in a matching funds basis, and I think a lot of my neighbors would, and probably people in other areas of the county where you're close to the lagoon and there's no hope of getting sewer line. So just moving forward, this is not for tonight, but moving forward, I think that would be important. I also support the thoughts of protecting the St. John's River from septic and biosolids as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. If you wanted to speak on the other item, too, sir, if you'd fill out an extra comment card for me, that would be wonderful. All right. End of the public comments. I'll close public comments. Commission, do we have any comments or conversations that you'd like to have? Mr. Barfield?
Yeah, I would just like to say this, that this is not the answer all for everything. We still have to focus on getting sewer and get rid of septic tanks, and that's going to require a lot of arm twisting with the developers as we go along, and we can do that. We have to really push forward with this, and in some of, at some point, we're going to have to add more capability, more capacity, and that's going to have to be considered, too. But absolutely, that has to be the priority when it comes to septic tanks to sewers. We have got to get rid of the septic tanks. I understand, too, that there's some legislation that will be pushed, to try to get pushed through, to assist in some of the matching funds. We'll see what happens there, and I think it's important that we focus on our legislative of our delegation to help them push that through. There's a lot of things that are going on. You know, we're dealing with 50 years of neglect, 50 years of what we did. The gentleman's talked about, if we knew what we knew back then, what we know now, we would have done things a lot different. But now we have to deal with that, and it will take time. Again, we're trying to correct 50 years of problems. And I've lived here since 62. I've lived on the river. I grew up on the river, and I know, in fact, see, I just still call it the river because it's the Indian River. So I think this is a good start. I wish it was more. I wish we could do a lot more, but financially, we can't eliminate every septic tank right now. So Madam Chair, with that, I make a motion that we pass the item number one of this, and go forth.
Wonderful. I have a motion on the table to pass item one. Do I have Commissioner Isnardi?
Yeah, I'll second that, but I just wanted to comment, and, you know, I was going to talk a little bit about it when we were talking about the muck, but just to go off of what you're talking about, I will forever be an advocate to take care of the infrastructure because, you know, it feels really good, and we're going to put these upgraded septic systems in, but like you said, Mr. Lamb, I mean, we won't even see that benefit for decades as far as what we won't be putting into the lagoon, because the biggest offenders are the old systems that are failing. It's not the new ones that we're putting in. And so, because most of that nitrogen's not leaching into the lagoon because the systems are working because they're brand-new, as far as the standard systems go. So I'm glad we're doing this. And I was the one, you know, surprising me here, this limited government, Isnardi, that said we should go countywide, but as more of a concern about not just our septic and what we're contributing to the lagoon, but our drinking water. I mean, that's a health and safety issue for me, and I've seen failing septic system, and it's pretty disgusting. I've seen one actually fail at my folks' house back up north, and it is pretty disgusting. But until we address our infrastructure, our sewer, until we increase our capacity, to me, it's all for naught. I mean, I'm glad we're doing this. Don't get me wrong, I don't want to say we don't want to do it, but until we address capacity, sewer capacity, and until we get people off of septics, it's not going to make a hill of beans a difference, because I am not going to justify, and I'm not going to continue to support projects when I have to answer to my residents that are asking why we're dumping sewage into the lagoon. I just won't do it. And when we have tens of millions of dollars, more than we anticipated collecting in the lagoon fund, I will not, I will not agree with the idea that we shouldn't use some of those funds for upgrading our current sewage capacity. I absolutely will never agree that that's a good idea, that we continue to do other things while we dump raw sewage into the lagoon. It makes no logical sense, and you can show me all the science you like, but you try to sell to your residents, because I'm the one that has to represent five different areas of this county and municipalities, and answer to that, why we're doing this when we're doing, when we're changing our sewer, our septic ordinance, but we're not, we're still dumping garbage into the lagoon like we are. So that's going to be, hopefully, in the future, that will change, and we can at least use a piece of that fund, especially because, like I said, we had all these projects plugged in, but rather than take a big chunk of that to address capacity, we've just moved the other projects up, which all are equally as important. But I am not going to justify it any further, and I will never be an advocate for the lagoon sales tax if we don't address our capacity and we don't address our, getting people off of the septics altogether. So again, I just want to restate that, because oftentimes, you know, because we make laws like this and we add more things in place that will, again, will be beneficial far into the future, I want to at least state that so people know that I'm still working on it, and I'll still always advocate for it, whether I have the votes up here to change it or not. But hopefully, maybe in the future, we will. So with that, I mean, I'll second it and I'll support it. And again, maybe in the future, we look at doing it countywide, not just for the overall benefit of the health and safety of all of our waterways, our Melbourne Tillman, our St. Johns, but our drinking water as well, because it's no good if we're drinking the garbage either. And if you're crapping in your backyard, you're drinking from your front, I don't know how that makes any sense and how that's a healthy thing to do. I mean, lack of a better way to say it. You get the idea, but I can't see how that's a good thing.
Thank you, Commissioner Isnardi. I think for all but the last one, I'll accept your little last sentence.
I don't apologize for that.
No, it's very colorful. It kind of paints a good picture. I agree totally with you. I think we're going to have to work on the infrastructure issues we have. My hope would be, all the municipalities in Brevard County, we start adjusting rates to do that. Let me tell you why. If we can get the lagoon fixed and get rid of the lagoon tax, I think that would be wonderful. So if we focus on that, let's do the things to do, we need to do, that we have no choice with, but we need to all be responsible and pay for our own waste in your homes. You know, we have to take care of those things. And the rates are going to have to increase where I am in the municipality I live in. We're increasing by 3% every year here to, they get enough to start making sure all those lines or those sewer pipes are lined and everything's done correctly. And we have to do this. Commissioner Isnardi, I agree with you 100%, ma'am. We've got to start thinking on these items and maybe moving forward with some type of strategic plan. I think we need to maybe talk to our state representatives to get them to change whatever we need to change up there. I think we should have mandatory inspections on septic systems. And I know that's not very politically popular, but, you know, it's just something that we probably should do. I don't know the time span on those or how it all works. I'm not a septic expert, but I think it's something that we should be doing. So I love the heart of all of you guys up here. I think we have a great commission and a great community, and I think we're going to make some progress here moving forward. And on that, I don't see any more lights, so all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed. Pass is 5-0. I'm sorry, Commissioner Smith, did you have any comments, sir?
No, I think you guys have touched most of the bases. I really enjoy the passion of the people that want to fix the Indian River Lagoon, and I think people understand that there is no one silver bullet, there's no magic wand, it's going to take all of us working together to get it done. But we have to focus on that and keep moving forward.
Thank you, sir. So on item two, Commissioner, I'd like to hear your comments. I'm going to recommend that we send this to the committee and have them come back with some ideas if we're going to do grants. After reading through all the information we got sent over the last few days and really trying to think through this, I think the couple of the ideas we have is giving me a little bit of heartburn with it. So I'd kind of like, with y'all's permission, maybe letting them come back with some recommendation on grant funds, but Commissioner Tobias, are you getting ready to push a button?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you, and I want to thank Ms. Barker for putting together the chart that you guys all have available on potential costs for grant funds for low-income applicants as well as all septic permits. And I don't think it's a bad idea to send it back to the COC and get recommendations, but I do have a couple quick questions so that group can get as accurate information as possible. And I understand you didn't have much time to do this, but did you take into account Florida Statute 381.0065, the one that mandates that anaerobic systems must already be constructed under certain criteria due to the Florida Springs and Offshore Protection Act, when you had the estimate of 480 tanks per year?
That, I believe that that Florida statute is for the spring sheds, the central Florida spring sheds?
The criteria is within 75 feet from a private portable well, 50 feet from any non-portable wells, 10 feet away from any storm sewer pipes, 5 feet away from buildings or property lines, and here's the big one, 75 feet away from any service water bodies. So my understanding, that would work for the Indian River Lagoon?
So those are setback requirements for new systems, but we were analyzing the location of existing systems, some of which are closer than that, some of which predate that rule.
Okay, I'm confused. We're looking at the table, I'm looking at the table here, that you estimate 800 a year, and if you do your one-third on septic, 60% overlay, you have, there would be 480. Is that correct?
Yes.
My question then is, let's take my house, for example. I live very close to the Indian River Lagoon. I was mandated under state statute to have an anaerobic system. I put one in prior to this ordinance that would go through. So my argument would be, I purchased that home before these regulations went in play, so I shouldn't be eligible for any type of grant. Did you pull out from the 480, the homes or the potential properties that would have to do that regardless of us passing this ordinance?
Right, so the 480 was only based on new, not on existing, but no, I did not subtract out of the new ones how many would have to put in the advanced system because the state would make them.
Okay. So I'm just trying to get this $9.6 million to a more, to a more reasonable, palatable number, and I think that the more that you work this down, you would see that number decrease. Again, I understand that you didn't have probably the amount of time, but when you do take this back to the Citizens Oversight Committee, I certainly would like to see something that takes into account state statute, so they can get a more accurate cost analysis that would go into this. Other suggestions that I would make, as you bring it to the Citizens Oversight Committee, I think that it's important that if we do offer grants, that we offer them equitably. I don't think that we should take one project, like the Satellite Beach INI project, and offer it to those individuals and not offer it to the septic tank folks. If we're going to have no means test on one, I don't think we should have a means test on another one, just for consistency's sake. And, you know, I understand that we haven't yet got to worked out the means test when it comes to, or if there will be one, for the INI, but you were very helpful, and you mentioned that INI, you revised it, has 1/100 of an impact on the lagoon as septic tanks. So I think if we are going to try to incentivize people, we should incentivize the folks that are creating 99 times the amount of nitrogen and phosphorus loading in the lagoon is the ones that are creating much, much less than this. And I appreciate the analysis on the $19, but I think we need to look at this a little bit more than a month-to-month basis. When you take the $19 and you multiply by a factor of 360, which is the 30 years that you put down there, we're talking almost $7,000. So 68, 40, I think. So that's certainly quite a bit of money, whether, no matter what type of home you're living in. But anyway, I think consistency is extremely important, and let me ask you, based on the results that we got for the INI, do you, and I understand it was a pilot program in Satellite Beach, but I think you recognize that there were nine homes in your analysis. Is that a program that will continue countywide? I did the analysis here as to what that potentially would cost, and is that an area that you think we need to continue to look into?
So although that smoke testing only found nine leaky laterals, they found, I believe it was 89 missing clean-out caps, little, you know, $4 caps, that if it's missing, storm water can overwhelm the system and cause the overflows that are obviously a concern. There were also some problems discovered through that smoke testing to the public part of the system, manhole covers and some other issues. And so those other repairs can now be budgeted and done because we're aware of them. So the value of the smoke testing is much larger than just the nine leaky laterals that the lagoon funds would address. So what the Oversight Committee spoke about at last month's meeting was encouraging cities, encouraging wastewater service districts who have experienced overflows or were close to experiencing overflows, to look at the neighborhoods that have the largest INI problems and apply for funds to do the smoke testing there. With the idea that by doing that smoke testing, we might identify a small handful of privately-owned leaky laterals that need to be repaired, but we would identify other flaws in the system that could be repaired with other funds or little $4 clean-out caps that could avoid, you know, millions of gallons of overflow for a very small amount of money.
Thank you. I appreciate, you know, that information, and I wasn't advocating for or against that, I just was looking for more information. One other thing that I would like for you to look forward, you know, when you speak with the Citizens Oversight Committee, was Mr. Lamb's suggestion. I think that, from what we've heard in the past, that a functioning conventional system, while not as good as an anaerobic, still is probably much better than a non-functioning 50-year-old system. And I think that we may get more, I mean, you used an empiric approach, which looked at the amount of potential nitrogen and phosphorus when coming up with that plan. We may actually, it sounds like, get more bang for our buck if we offered some grant program to the 60,000 septic tanks that are currently out there. And I understand there might be a great cost, but if you could analyze that and potentially show us how much per dollar of nitrogen reduction we could, if there was some sort show us how much per dollar of nitrogen reduction we could, if there was some sort of grant for switching the older systems to either anaerobic or conventional, I think you would, you know, I think we'd find out that even a conventional one at a lower cost would provide more of a benefit to, to the lagoon than a non-functioning one. So I think that that at least is something that is worthy of, of looking into, how we potentially could go about doing that. But if you could take all that, I think that's a good suggestion by Ms. Barker. If you take that to the COC and hammer it down a little bit and, and bring back some suggestions, I think that we could look into that.
Okay. I, I, thank you very much for that guidance. I just, for everybody, there is about $20 million in the plan as a grants program to upgrade existing old conventional septic to the more advanced systems. We did an initial analysis to identify the worst systems, that's what's in the plan now. What we have underway at the moment is taking the, the work that Applied Ecology did to develop this ordinance and verifying or updating exactly which of those systems are the worst systems, most polluting conventional systems out there. And so there, there is a grant program already. It's about $20 million over the 10-year life of the lagoon tax, but we can certainly look at whether that's the right amount, whether that's the right balance of funding to put towards that program, or what, you know, the other priorities are.
Madam Chair, can I, sorry, can you give us a little bit more, what is that, what's the cost share on the, you know, it sounds like Mr. Lamb is, so I'm not asking the question for Mr. Lamb, but assuming that, you know, he was looking into it, can you explain, you know, how mu, how much is available there and what the grant would be in order to do that?
There's 16,000 per system if it's upgrading from conventional to a 65% reducing or better advanced system. There's also 20,000 available if you're hooking up to sewer.
Thank you.
You touched on that a little bit. I think when we talk about grants, I think a grant program is great, but it has to be, I would think, consolidated because you could ask for a grant for hookup to sewer or if you want to upgrade your system. I think all that should be uniform and together. The other thing that's a concern to me is, I know North Merritt Island, we're putting Forest Main all the way up Courtney. Now, that's great, but how, how is it funding going to happen when it's, you have laterals out from there, you have to step it down, you have to do a lot of other things, and I just, I'm concerned for the future and, because working with utilities and all of this, how, I know there's matching grants you can get with DEP or all, things like that, but how does all that work? I think we need to really make sure we address that, to the point also where we may be having to give grants, matching grants to do that work to, as Commissioners Nardi was talking about, when we have infrastructure. But if we can do the requests for grants and make it very consistent, where it makes it simple for people to ask for it, because they could be for sewer hookup, or it could be for advanced septic tank, or for whatever, it's all in one group. So just my thoughts.
Thank you. A lot of really good ideas, and I kind of like Mr. Lamb's suggestion also. I would rather see us use the grant funds for the people that don't have to do a thing to their system that would encourage them to upgrade. I think I would rather that over new construction, because when you're building new construction, you realize you're going to have to pay extra costs. Construction costs are going up anyways, and I really believe in my heart, it's our responsibility to take care of our own lifestyles of what we need to take care of. I was going to use Commissioner Nardi's line right there, but just...
Please do it so they can quote us both in the paper.
Okay, now what was the word exactly?
Because you know you're gonna...
Just say I said it for me.
Wouldn't be the first time.
Okay. So I, I like these ideas. I think there's some really good ideas of whatever we can do to encourage people to do better with their, their own homes with, with what they need to do. I really like that. So, do you have enough information now, ma'am, if we, do we need a motion on that? Or do you have, want a motion to send it to the committee, or are you good, or?
We, yes.
Eden Sane, yes. May I receive a motion from somebody along the lines of?
I make a motion that we send this back to the Citizens Advisory Committee, let them look at it and work with Natural Resources, and come back and bring us a recommendation.
You have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, by Commissioner Tobias.
I don't know, does any of these people want to talk?
That's on the next one, we got to go back to it, right?
Oh, I thought that's where we were, because we voted on it.
Well, okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. We're going to go to number three now, which I completely confused the commission, so... Yes, ma'am.
So Agenda Item H3 is an ordinance amending and updating the existing septic codes. This was when we were writing the other ordinance and searching the code for where septic came up. We found a lot of old code. I'm going to let Darcy McGee describe. Do you have a matrix in there of what the changes are, but it's a lot of material, so can you summarize?
So as Virginia said, when we were researching for the overlay ordinance, we found many, many pages of remnant code related to when Brevard County administered the septic and well permitting program, which is now done by DOH. So I'm going to try to boil down these 30-odd pages into the four substantive, substantive changes that we made. So the first one, obviously, is we deleted a lot. We deleted many, many pages related to the permitting program for the septic in the well. The second thing we did was we, there's a section there related to a variance board, the On-Site Sewage Disposal Systems Variance Board. We went ahead and struck that, so that now, and created a section, we, where we now have a section for administrative waivers, and that's now called density restrictions. So the variance board is no longer under this proposal, and the administrative criteria, which was existing criteria for the permit standard, that's not related to permit standards, is now included in the density restrictions. The third change was in the Lake Washington ordinance, we removed some duplicative criteria established in the, in Chapter 62, which is the floodplain protection and the surface water protection ordinance related to stormwater management. We revised the minimum lot size from .41 acres to .5 acres for consistency with DOH requirements. And lastly, we removed the language related to the county On-Site Sewage Disposal Variance Board, and now Lake Washington will have the, residents will have the option of the administrative variance, or they could come to the Board of County Commissioners for an appeal related to their lot size. And last, surface water protection, Chapter 62. The setbacks for the Class 1, Class 2, Class 3, et cetera waters remain at 100 feet, that's already existing. We clarified and simplified the language to allow setbacks to 75 feet for insufficient lot depth, regardless of the year that the lot was created. And then we also allow, if the lot was pre-72, they can reduce the setback to 50 feet in accordance with DOH requirements. Of course, they'd still have to meet the overlay with regard to the type of the system, but they could get closer to the water. We removed the language related to the advanced wastewater treatment, because that's now also established in the overlay. So those are the four big changes. Yesterday, we did present to the LPA, they had no questions, and they voted to pass it unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I have a few cards on these items. Commissioners, if we don't have any questions, I'm going to go ahead and call cards. Okay, George Rosenfeld, sir?
My name is George Rosenfeld, I live in Suntry. I am an environmental scientist, retired. I'm also getting to be a little over the hill. I guess you really had to separate three and four legally because they're different ordinances, but they're all part of the same environmental science problem. I stand behind what I said at the last September 25 meeting. Even the better septic tanks are better than an outhouse or a small hole in the ground. They are steps forward a better solution, making sewage treatment plants available to the entire population of the county by installing pipelines for connection, enlarging the existing ones, and building additional ones where necessary. Don't forget, we have had one in South Patrick Shores since the 1950s. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm short and sweet today.
So nice to have you tonight. Mr. Lou Kotnick?
No, they'll call.
Okay, Ms. Meredith?
She's gone.
She's gone. Mary Spar?
I'm Mary Spar, and I'm speaking for Teteracole Sierra Club. We want to thank you again for your efforts to, to improve the septic systems. This ordinance that we're considering right now is a cleanup ordinance, and it updates language and procedures, which you heard from Darcy. There should be nothing controversial about it, and we urge you to pass it as written. I'd like to bring to your attention something that Virginia Barker said at the September 25 meeting. The Save Our Indian River Lagoon Project Plan, funded by the half-cent sales tax, allocates $68 million to removing or retrofitting the worst septic systems in the county over the next 10 years. And that $68 million will address 3,734 of those worst systems. However, we've learned that the pace of development, the Health Department has permitted nearly 800 septic systems per year while we're trying to address the worst one. So we're currently losing ground. She said, "We're currently losing ground." And at that September 25 meeting, I brought up the fact that the county still allows new subdivisions on septic systems. And I suggested that the staff, you asked the staff to investigate whether the municipalities actually did this. And to my surprise, Darcy McGee's staff actually tried to find the answer to whether the cities allow new subdivisions on septic. And thank you so much to all the Natural Resources staff that were part of that exercise. And I'm going to pass out a chart that staff made, and looking at the chart, you'll see that most of the municipalities don't allow new subdivisions on septic. It's time for the county to change its code to protect the Indian River Lagoon. I now believe that that code, the code that needs to be changed is part of the land development regulations for subdivisions, not anything we're considering tonight. Stopping new subdivisions on septic is a subject for another time, and hopefully y'all think about this. In conclusion, Sierra Club's asked you to pass the cleanup ordinance as written, and think about dealing with the problem of new subdivisions on septic at a later date.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Courtney Barker? Yeah, I thought she left us. All right, I'm going to close public comments, Commissioners' comments, concerns. Commissioner Nardi.
I was just going to make a motion to approve.
Okay. I have a motion to approve on the table, second by Commissioner Barfield. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Okay, we are moving into new business. Item J1.
This is a request for the Board to consider a special magistrate recommendation to reduce the accrued fine of $67,406 down to actual cost of $1,907, and execute the settlement agreement and release of lien for the code enforcement case at 4345 Carrollwood Drive in Melbourne. This matter went to the special magistrate on June 21, where he heard the Atlantic Mortgage Services request to reduce the fine, and at that time, he made a recommendation to bring the fine down to $8,647. After that hearing, Atlantic Mortgage filed an appeal with the 18th Judicial Circuit Court stating that the, contesting the lien and more generally the case. So we brought the matter back before the special magistrate in September, and based on the evidence presented then, he recommended, the special magistrate, that is, recommended reducing the fine down to actual cost. By the Board executing the settlement agreement and release of lien, it will allow us to recover the cost that we've incurred investigation in this case, and it also will allow us to settle without any further litigation expense at this point.
Thank you, sir. I have no cards on this. Commissioner Nardi?
Quite the history with this case. Yeah, I don't see any problem. It covers our costs, and that's what probably most of these court enforcement things should be. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve this item?
Seconded for discussion.
Seconded by Commissioner Barfield. Sir, you have the floor.
You know, this appears to me to come back from what happened many years ago with banks taking, if I'm right, banks had to take back or not take back the property to avoid having to, to keep up with the property. They would not always officially take control of the property, but they would go into foreclosure, and it was a battle back then. If I remember right, there was talk of doing a registry just for all of the foreclosures. And I think it's just, to me, it's kind of ironic that now they're, they're wanting help when they didn't help us. The other, a question I have for Eden, is there any, I hear it says settle any further litigation expense. Do we have any litigation costs?
Well, what's happened, in order for them to preserve their right to appeal, the special magistrate's order, there was a deadline for them to file the appeal. So yes, there is litigation going on, but it's in the form of an appeal at the circuit court level.
Is there cost to us?
Yes, an internal cost primarily, because you would, we would do that internally. So it's not a substantial amount of money, but there is additional cost, and you could have some in-court costs associated with it as well if we were to lose. So the lots have been recombined, they've cured the violation, and so that's why the staff was in favor of a settlement.
Have a motion on the table, and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Item J2?
J2, this is a request for the Board of County Commissioners to approve legislative intent and grant permission to advertise amendments to Chapter 22, Buildings and Building Regulations, by adding a new Article 10 for tiny homes, providing minimum construction standards for tiny homes on wheels as a permanent residence. This is the second piece of our tiny home that we've been bringing forward, our initiation. And what we've looked at here is just specifically the construction piece. All the other conversations we've had have been around the zoning aspect of it. So with this, since the building code does not really apply to tiny homes on wheels, we're using the National, American National Standard Institute of recreational park trailer standards for the basis of our code to allow them as permanent residents. And we have a code attached that we will be using as the baseline of our code as we go through the legislative process. And that will start tomorrow with the BCAC, and then we'll be moving to the LPA in November 5, and then we'll be bringing this matter back before you for adoption, based on their input, since later in November. And that's when the zoning piece will come before you as well. So we'll have, the thought is, we'll have both of the ordinance that we have initiated come before you on the same night. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Thank you, sir. I do have one card on this item, Mr. Cheatham.
Thank you for having me. Commissioners, Michael Cheatham, Melbourne, representing Movable Roots, we're tiny home... We're a tiny home builder. So, mainly, I'm here just to say thank you again for putting this together, for the Building Department putting so much time and effort into this. Part of the tone that I've heard in the meeting tonight was wanting to do more, do things better, and change how Brevard County handles and does things. And potentially, tiny homes could be a very small piece of that puzzle in the future. You know, there's a lot of people looking to reduce their carbon footprint, and septic systems and things like that are all part of that carbon footprint. But in the tiny home space, there's a lot of people looking to go to composting toilets and different things to go off-grid. So, there's a lot of different things in this that can potentially, as Mr. Barfield said, potentially do more. And this is a very small piece of the puzzle, I believe. So, I just wanted to, again, thank the Commission for being very open-minded and progressive thinking on this, and the Building Department for putting so much time and effort into this.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Tabaya?
Mr. Cheatham? Sorry, you waited this long. I've got a, I wanted to thank you for your help with the building aspect of it. And I think we all agreed pretty unanimously, we chose the, I think, option 3 or C, the one that had the most stringent codes, which you said you already were building to. But the second part is, I think, the one that is going to be a little more touchy, and that is where we eventually allow these homes to go. So, I'm going to make a request, since you've sat back there so patiently for the last two-plus hours, that you remain engaged, because we're making decisions, and we really don't have an understanding of the marketplace. So, you know, you're the one that sees, you know, and deals with the customers as where they want to put, where they potentially would like to put this. And that doesn't mean we're going to follow, but we definitely value your input on where we place these, the same way we valued, you know, how we build these, or what regulations we do. So, as we come up, you know, please stay in contact with any of our offices, or, you know, the Planning and Zoning Department as well, so we can handle both aspects. Because I think if we have a consensus on how to build them, but we don't allow them to put in a, you know, in Brevard County, any place that someone could afford, we've probably done you a disservice. So, we're halfway there. Please help us, you know, get the second half. Again, thank you for, you know, all your help and leadership on this.
And I appreciate that. And I think, somebody said it earlier, everything starts with the first step. So, we're in that direction, and we're moving in that direction. And if anybody has any time in November, there's a weekend, I think it's the 15th and 16th in Elkton, just outside of St. Augustine. It is one of the largest tiny home events, shows there. They're expecting over 100,000 people attending it, just to kind of check out tiny homes. And I tell you, the number-one question I answer at those places is, "Where can I put this?" So, I'd love to tell them, Brevard County.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Commissioners, do I have a motion to approve legislative intent and grant permission to advertise?
So, moved.
Motion by Commissioner Barfield. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tabaya. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Okay, we're moving into item 3. I'm sorry, I'm looking at both you guys over there in the feet jacket.
They're not the same jacket.
They're different colors, Jim. Okay. All right.
Slightly different colors.
I have to bring my sunglasses.
Yeah, I'll have to put your socks over there. Okay, sirs. Item 3.
Good evening, Commissioners. Item 3 is the annual contract that we have with the Department of Health in Brevard County. The contract itself is for $467,415. These dollars have already been approved in the budget that you approved on the 25th. This is just the contract itself coming before you. Additionally, as part of this item, we're going to ask for approval of the fee resolution that comes from the Department of Health, and these are the user fees. There are a number of them having to do with tattoo inspections, septic inspections, that are going to have some increases. Those increases are expected to generate around $85,000. Those additional dollars will allow the Health Department to hire two additional inspectors, which will hopefully make those inspections of those septic systems and other things more efficient as they move forward.
Thank you, sir.
We do have multiple people from the Health Department here if there are any questions.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any questions, comments? Commissioner Tabaya?
Thank you. Can you please go over some of those fee increases and, you know, the relative increase, whether that be a percent or a real dollar figure?
I do not have them as percentages, but they are actually in the agenda item itself. We do a summary when we put it together. Some of them are tied to different vaccinations, such as hepatitis A is going from $56 to $59. Measles is going from $86 to $88. Typhoid, fever, from $83 to $84. Influenza, from $25 to $30. Under environmental health, body piercing, the resolution fee is increasing 20. Initial license is going from 150 to 170. Temporary establishment is from 75 to 95. Annual renewal is going from 150 to 170. And again, that's due to some changes, I think, at the state level regarding the inspections itself. They actually have to now go in and observe as part of the inspection, and actual tattooing take place, body piercing, so on and so forth. Tattooings also, those fees are going up by 20. That is the initial establishment from 200 to 220. Temporary establishment is 200 to 220, and the annual renewal is from 200 to 220. Food services, those fees, inspection fees are going up additional $20 also. The annual permit for school cafeterias are going from 170 to 190. And for operating for more than nine months, that's going from 200 to 220. And then the septic and sewage treatment and disposal systems, the application fee is going from 100 to 115 for septic tanks. Initial inspection is going from 75 to 85, and the inspection scheduling fee is going from 0 to 30. And that fee was actually something that was requested by the contractors to the Health Department themselves. And like I said, the estimated amount of revenue that will generate per year is $85,930. Thank you.
Okay, no more lights. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Isnardi?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Barfield. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes... Oops, I'm sorry. I never give you time to do it. I'm so sorry. Item passes 4 to 1. The Commissioner, Tabaya, an objection. Let's move into item 4, J4.
Thank you, Commissioners. Back in June, the Housing and Human Services Department submitted a grant to the Department of Justice to support our juvenile drug court. The grant itself was not brought back to the Board because the match was not required to come from the Board. The treatment provider offered up that match as in kind of cash. We found out the 25th or 26th of September that the grant was awarded. So, this item is to accept the grant, and because of the late notice, we were not able to put this into the budget. So, it's to accept the grant, authorize the county manager to sign contracts with the treatment provider, Lifetime Counseling Center, and the program evaluator, which is required by the grant, Dr. Kenneth Reynolds, to authorize the Department Director for Housing and Human Services to act as the authorized grantee official, that's for reporting and other requirements, to authorize the finance manager for the Housing Department to act as the fiscal point of contact, authorize mandatory grant travel, because, again, we weren't able to put that into the budget that was approved, and then finally authorize the county manager to do any budget change requests that are necessary.
Thank you, sir. And there is no impact to the general fund?
Correct.
Correct. Commissioners?
Well, if I could repeat all that, I would make the motion. So, what I'm going to take a shot at is say, "I make a motion to accept the grant with the six actions that are required under requested action in the agenda," and which authorizes the county manager to go ahead and execute the contracts. Is that close enough?
I believe so.
Okay.
We were trying to be thorough.
That's my motion. I'm sticking to it.
All right, I have a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Isnardi. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Okay, last item, item J5.
Do you have a card on that item?
I do.
Yeah, this is his item.
Oh. Mr. Paul Novak?
Good evening, Commissioners. Paul Novak, 1320 Silver Lake Drive, Melbourne. The last time my lease agreement was amended with the county, there were certain weeks of the year that I got rent relief in the Moore Justice Center, because the courts are basically out of business those weeks. I don't know whether it was a mistake that it, I can't honestly say whether it was a mistake that it didn't get, it wasn't put in the agreement when it was amended, or it was never discussed, or what the situation was. But there were two additional weeks that there's virtually no business in that building. That's the week of Good Friday, and it's the week right, whatever week New Year's falls on, okay? Whether it was, again, whether it was left out, I can't answer you, okay? But there is virtually no business in that building those two weeks, and I would like it added to the contract, to the amendment, if that's possible. So, I request your, I request your compliance in that matter.
Commissioner Tabaya, is that a new light, sir?
Yes, ma'am. I just had a couple of questions with your indulgence.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Novak. How many days are you currently receiving rent relief?
How many days?
Yes, sir.
I receive rent relief the Labor Day week, the week between Christmas and New Year's, Thanksgiving week, Labor Day, did I say Labor Day week, 4th of July week, and I believe Memorial Day week. Just so you understand, Commissioner Tabaya, basically speaking, that courthouse has a 20% of the year, okay, that courthouse is virtually dark.
Thank you. Have you asked for rent relief in the past outside the initial contract?
When you say outside the initial contract?
Sorry, you signed a contract?
I signed a, no, I took over an existing contract.
Okay, so you entered into a contract voluntarily?
Yes.
Have you, since that, you entered into that contract voluntarily, have you asked the Commission?
These weeks that, these weeks that I have rent relief, I asked for, okay? This is what this is all about, okay?
How many, how many additional days with this request are you asking for?
I'm asking for an additional 10 days.
So, during those requested dates, is the courthouse, is the courthouse open?
The courthouse, the courthouse is open, okay? The majority of the courtrooms are dark on those additional 10 days.
Okay. So, so help me out here. So, seeing how you entered into a contract, and the courthouse is open, I understand the business might not be as high as it is during the peak, but it's still open. Explain to me what the rationale for requesting these dates is.
The rationale, the rationale is, Commissioner Tabaya, okay, that I have employees that work for me there, okay? And normally, in this industry, when there's no business, okay, and times are quiet, employees are sent home, okay? I don't operate that way. One of my employees is a young, single mom who's trying to raise a child, okay? And the other, and the other employee is trying to pay a house mortgage, okay? I can't, in all good conscience, take away their income. Now, that, you know, so I'm losing money anyway, okay? I would just like to lose as least amount of money as possible, and that's why I'm making the request.
All right. So, just to be clear, you will remain open during these days?
I will remain, I will remain open, because I have to, because I have to pay my employees. I don't have to pay my employees. I choose to pay my employees. My father and my grandfather used to have an expression, "When you pay peanuts, you get monkeys," okay? I want my, I want my employees to be able to make a living.
Commissioner Isnardi, I'm going to let you jump in. I just got asked this question, though. It's 10 days, so they're only charging you $24 a day rent for this space, which is only like $4.80 a month?
No. I normally paid, I paid, my normal rent is $1,200 a month.
Okay, so the two, it's, I'm just curious, why we're seeing something for $247?
Because the whole thing, because the whole thing amounts, the whole thing amounts to, the whole thing amounts to about $28 a day.
I, I don't know. County manager, why, do we typically see things like this if you have a negotiated contract, that we would?
Excuse me?
Do we typically see stuff like this if there's a negotiated contract?
Well, to amend the contract, as it has occurred in the past, when similar requests were made, it has to come back to the Board. So, there's no authority for the county manager to do any, to do any modifications or amendments to the contract. That's why it comes back to the Board when you have someone who wants the terms of the current agreement put or modified. So, it's really up to the Board to approve it, and that's why Mr. Novak has brought this forward with this request.
Okay, I don't, I don't know. I, if you're paying, you pay $1,200 a month to?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know. It doesn't make a lot of sense to me for this amount to make a change in your contract, but Commissioner Isnardi?
Madam Chair?
Yes, let me let Commissioner Isnardi speak first, then you try to butt it in on her. Thank you.
I just want to ask you a question, because I know you've been there for many, many years, because for many years, I mean, we've come in here, many, you service a lot of employees, correct?
Not in that building.
No?
No. The employees that I service are in this building, okay?
Yeah.
That, that, the previous owner had a terrible reputation, okay? It's very hard to overcome that. I've been able to, I've been able to pretty much overcome it over here, okay? I haven't been able to overcome it in the other building.
I meant, you, you service county employees?
I service county employees in this building.
Right.
Okay. Virtually all, virtually all the business in the other building is from outside traffic.
Okay. I just know that in this building, and I'm not saying we should vote with our hearts or our emotion, but you run tabs for a lot of county employees, don't you?
Yes, I do.
And you do that because either people don't have the cash, or they're waiting to get paid?
They don't have the cash, they get paid once a month. There's a lot of reasons that I do it, okay? I try to make it, I try to make it as employee-friendly as I can.
I do, because even in the rarity that I am able to stop in, you guys always act like you've known me your whole lives, which is crazy, but I think it's wonderful that you treat everybody that works for the county in this sort of way. So, I don't have a problem with it. It's $247, so unless our county manager tells us that it's going to significantly impact our budget, I think for the return that you give the employees in this building is justifiable to me, because the business is not there. And now, should I, do I think that we should make this exception in every case? I think $1,200 rent to what you're paying is more than fair, and I think a $250 ask for what our employees at least receive here in return is not significant, and is not going to break our budget.
Thank you so much, Commissioner.
So, I don't have a problem with it.
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that unlike a normal food business in the public sector, this operation is extremely unique. His business is limited to the people that are in the building. And if he has two weeks where there are no people in the building, he's not getting business off the street. This isn't like a normal operation that is competing, like, say, in avenues. So, I think this is a hardship for him, and I don't think it's a big deal for the county to extend forgiveness to him for $247. So, I would be in support of this, and I would be more than happy to make the motion to support it.
Thank you, sir. I have a motion on the table. Do I have a second for discussion still? Second for discussion, Commissioner Barfield?
I just, I'd like to go see his mode on this, but I'd also like to look at the future, why this has to come before the County Commission. why this has to come before the County Commission, see if there's something that can come up where we don't have to do this as a $247 issue.
Twenty-one cents.
Yeah, 21 cents too. But I think we need to relook at how we do this, maybe y'all can bring something back. I'll call a question.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor say, oh, Commissioner Tabaya, you jumped in, sir.
I think the motion was, you know, all of it.
Okay, okay, all in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed?
Nay.
Passes four to one with Commissioner Tabaya in objection.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, sir. I don't know how we got the 21 cents either, it's just interesting, interesting item.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'm just curious, since we're changing this contract, can we, can we force, like, Taco Tuesdays, or, you know, boysenberry pie on Pie Day, or, you know, silly egg disease-friendly dishes? I mean, since we're changing contracts, you know, willy-nilly?
I don't know, sir. Do you have some recommendations? There's something with peanut butter, you get a second. Okay. All right. Okay, Ms. Eden, maybe you can help us with that. Okay, we are done with all of our items, I don't have any more public comments, and we'll move to board reports. County Manager?
The only item is that we have a workshop scheduled for October 18th. We don't have a topic, so I'd ask that the Board would like to cancel that workshop.
Have a motion to cancel the workshop.
I move that we cancel that workshop.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? Passes five zero. Ms. Bentley, County Manager?
No report.
Thank you. Commissioner Barfield?
No report.
Commissioner Tabaya?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I shadowed another employee who deals with the 800 megahertz tower, and I know I'm supposed to go out there and learn about the jobs that these employees do, but I was astounded by one of our county employees. The guy's name is Warren Hall, and let me tell you a little about, about one of our county employees. Warren's family came over from Jamaica, neither his mom or dad had college degrees. Warren is an electrical engineer. Warren's brother is a mechanical engineer, and the black sheep of the family is a registered nurse. The amount of, the amount of education and the amount of love that this man had, not only for this country, but this county, was absolutely astounding. And he passed it on to his kids, who were all either about ready to enter college or were in college. So yes, the 800 megahertz towers were, you know, exciting to look at at 250 feet in the air and all the technology that went in, but meeting somebody that had worked so hard and had, and had succeeded so much in the United States really was a testament to, I think, all our county employees, but goodness gracious, Warren, you know, so when you see a guy driving around looking at, up at those, just, you know, that's a county employee with a, an electrical engineering degree, which is, you know, very, 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 as a political science major a couple of times over, let me tell you, it's many times the amount of effort, intelligence that go in there. We have some absolutely fabulous employees out there, and Warren is just one. And finally, for the unfortunate hurricane that is going to make sure tomorrow afternoon, Brevard County, who's been hit by many, our hearts go out to everyone in Tallahassee, and whatever, you know, whatever assistance that is available, you know, I certainly would like to see whether that's advice, or, because we have quite a bit of experience in Tallahassee, it's not unfortunately, or fortunately so, it's not experienced what we have in Brevard County. So our hearts certainly go out to everyone up there.
Yes, sir, good mention. Did you climb the tower?
No, you, though, I suggest everyone go out there, it's not a ladder, it is one rung that you have to climb individually and then pull your body up. I would have been afraid to make the first one, let alone all the way to the top.
Well, I thought you did, because you were driving the lawnmower the week before.
Yeah, no, no, I was not that crazy.
All right. Commissioner Smith, sir, do you have any reports?
I do. In addition to Commissioner Barfield wearing pink shirt and pink socks, I would like to give out another Real Men Wear Pink shout-out to some folks that I've seen on camera, namely, Mr. John Denninghoff for his pink shirt. And, boy, I had to put my sunglasses on when I caught a glimpse of Ian Golden and Jim Leishenfeldt with their pink blazers. And I also was privy to seeing a picture of Jim's pink sneakers. And also, I wanted to give a shout-out to Tony Fassow and his folks for their Real Men Wear Pink support. So kudos to everyone.
Oh, Frank has a pink shirt too on, Commissioner.
Well, he didn't make the camera, so I missed it.
Oh.
So, thank you, Frank.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Isnardi?
I just wanted to discuss with the Board to make sure, and I spoke about it with the Chairwoman, about the possibility of allowing her, or giving her the authority to choose an optional canvas board member if need be. It says it can be approved by the Commission, but we have to make sure we're either not running for office, that we haven't endorsed, et cetera, et cetera. And I know that one Commissioner Tabaya was going to check his schedule and make sure that he was eligible for Election Day, but I just wanted to make sure that the Board would be okay, or if we need to make a motion to give her the authority to find a member that's eligible as an alternative.
I would make the motion.
Okay.
So, I'll make a motion to allow the Chairwoman to appoint a canvassing board member in her absence if necessary on behalf of the County Commission.
Second.
Is that good?
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? Passes five zero. Thank you, Commissioner Isnardi. And I have no items for tonight, so I'm going to call this meeting adjourned. You guys have a happy Tuesday.